2022 Meeting of the Harnett County Board of Commissioners to Order. I'd like to welcome everyone. I see we have a lot of people interested in the meeting today. And I'd like to say, say welcome. At this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Matthews to lead us in the pledge and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, we do thank you for this day. We thank you for the rain, for the water to bring our water table back where it needs to be. We thank you for these folks who are here today. We thank you for our county. We thank you for these commissioners who have given their time to serve. Father, we ask that you would be with us today as we go about the business of this county. We pray for our county government leaders, that you would be with them. We just thank you for the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Matthews. Okay, at this time, we will consider any additions or deletions to our published agenda. Do we have any changes? Any commissioners have any changes? If not, then I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the agenda as is published.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously, Madam Clerk. Okay, next is our consent agenda. Any changes to the consent agenda? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Chairman Wetherspoons, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Dawson, second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carried unanimously, Madam Clerk. Okay, at this time, we will have our public comment period. And prior to, prior to starting this, let me, we have a Board of Commissioners rules of procedure. It's published, been approved by the board, and Rule 29 deals with the public comment period. If anyone would like to get a copy of that, I think it's online. If you can't get it online, if you'll contact our clerk, she will get you a copy. But the public comment period is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes, and each person desiring to speak shall have a maximum of three minutes to make their remarks. Speaker may not speak more than one time during the public comment period. Speakers shall address the board from the podium and begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Public comments not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. The board shall refrain, excuse me, from engaging in a dialogue except to the extent necessary to clarify the speaker's position. The board shall not entertain questions from the audience, and discussions between speakers and members of the audience is prohibited. Speakers shall maintain proper decorum and shall make their comments in a civil manner. Personal attacks and use of obscene and profane language are prohibited. Speaker comments shall be limited to subjects that are within the board's jurisdiction. Speakers shall not discuss matters that concern the candidacy of any person seeking public office, including the speaker. Closed session matters, those matters which are the subject of public hearings, and any matters intended to promote any individual's commercial or pecuniary interest. Actions on items brought up during the public comment period will be at the discretion of the board. So at this time, it is now 9:05. We will start the public forum, and at 9:35, we will stop the public forum.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one comment that I received that I'll need to read at some point.
If, if you want to go ahead and read that, Madam Clerk.
Is it okay to read it from here?
Yes, that'll be fine.
Greetings, Commissioner. My name is Glenn Moggan. I live at 230 East Wellington Street in Anger. My wife and I have lived at that address for almost seven years. I've noticed much about how social media probes into our lives. It has become another reality, no longer a distraction. When I read that our jet port needs improvements without much mention on how this benefits the citizens of Harnett County, it makes me skeptical of the need. Perhaps this is part of your debate this morning, those jet port needs, although I doubt much debate will take place. I can only add that when little attention is paid to our air, water, and soil, when traffic has become more than a headache for years without, without resolution, I admit to concerns. When our state's website, ncdphepidemiologyweldwatercontaminantsbycounty, ncdhhs.gov, points to dangerous contaminants of residents' wells without action, it raises multiple concerns over why our jet port needs funds. Do the users of our jet port stick around, live here, get taxed here? Developers will come and go, escaping with millions of dollars that have no benefit to our county. Those new residents we've been hearing, reading about more than a heads up to deal with our less-than-average schools' traffic, traffic and more traffic, water quality, and increased air pollution. I believe we must do and can do better for Harnett County. We continue to face down a pandemic, a worker shortage, inflation, and other ills often of our own creation. Lastly, our priorities are our present residents, not the promises of phony wealth generated by businesses that take their profits elsewhere. Best wishes for the coming year.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right.
Yeah, Jerry Rivas, 364 Twin Ponds Road. I would like to know what thin-skinned milquetoast wrote this so-called Rule 29. If a political candidate can't stand a little mudslinging, maybe he ought to pack his junk up and go on to the House. I don't need your permission or anybody's by God permission to call a political candidate an idiot if I think they're an idiot. Now, last week Sheriff Wayne Coates told me he wished that I would come see him before I came to this commission to make remarks. I don't need his permission. I don't need your permission. My permission is granted me by the First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States. Maybe some of y'all ought to read it. Maybe Attorney Snow should explain it to you. A couple of weeks ago, I was at your tax office across the parking lot, and I got a form that's for exemption for the disabled. And they told me, they said, now this has to be filled out by your doctor. Can't be a P.A., has to be your doctor. So I read it. I said, this form must be filled out by a physician licensed to practice medicine in the state of North Carolina or a government agency qualified to determine disability benefits. I said, oh, so I could take this to Social Security Office. They said, no, it has to be filled out by a doctor. I said, but look right here. It says blah, 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 or blah, blah, blah. No, it has to be filled out by a doctor. Do you have people that actually work for this county government that are so stupid they don't know the definition of the word or, you know, A or B? That means you have a choice. Your head tax assessor, he tried to tell me the same thing. This guy actually had to call Raleigh to get clarification on the word or. Simply amazing. I have 11 grandchildren, this is to change the subject, 11 grandchildren that attend Harnett County Public Schools. I have an eight-year-old granddaughter who three weeks ago missed a week of school because she had the Omicron variant. Now she's missing this week because she was exposed to Omicron at school. The whole class got sent home. It, it's getting absolutely stupid. It's absolutely stupid. They say it's super contagious and we're all going to get it. So quit sending all these kids home and let them get it. Not one of my 11 grandkids has gone an entire six-week period without missing school for something. It's ludicrous. And then I see these clowns driving around in the cars with the windows up wearing a mask. I'm going to bed alone tonight. I will wear a condom just to be safe. That's about how much sense all this junk makes. But again, if I want to stand here and say Wayne Coates is an idiot, or our governor is an idiot, that's my right. That is absolutely my right. And one time you called me for losing my temper in here and dropping the F-bomb in front of a bunch of high school kids, hey, those little morons, they hear a lot worse on that bus every morning. So save your sanctimonious bullcrap.
Thank you, Mr. Rivas.
Hi, my name is Angela Scarborough. I prefer not to give my address due to domestic violence issues. Is that okay? Okay. I became a resident in 2007 in the Carolina Lakes community, where I raised three boys, coached, taught, and counseled. In 2017, I left an abusive marriage, and I quickly learned that there are very little resources for domestic violence victims. Over the past four years, I've been harassed, stalked relentlessly. I've been falsely arrested several times. And each time I'm arrested, it gets dropped because unfortunately, my abuser made friends with the right people in Harnett County. An incident I want to talk about today is in 2017. I'm sorry, excuse me, I have a brain injury, so I apologize. In 2019, February 8th, 2019, I was falsely arrested, and I was placed in the Harnett County Jail. I cooperated, I cooperated so much that the police officers let me text in the back of their car. When I got to intake, Corporal Dawson was extremely rude, and she asked me if I was suicidal, and I said I was, because I remember the first time I was arrested falsely. When I was in there, a, when I was in the cell, the guards allowed somebody, they opened up our cell door and allowed somebody to come into the cell and beat up my cellmate. They just came in and beat her up. They threw off and just beat her up. And then I ran out to get help, and the guard yelled to the person that came in to beat up the inmate to get out of the room. So she knew who it was that came in. So she purposely let her in the room. So I was scared the second time I was arrested. So I said I was suicidal. While, while waiting, I was two hours sitting there, and I was looking down at the ground crying, and Officer, Corporal Dawson came up and just threw me to the ground for absolutely no reason, zero reason. And as a teacher and a counselor, I questioned behavior. I, I started, I turned up, and I'm like, what is wrong with you people? I'm from the state of Maine. In Maine, we say you guys, you people. It's a collective term. She said, you people, you people. And she proceeded to douse me with two cans of pepper spray. She, they beat, they beat me. I was out for about eight minutes. I woke up, I had brain damage. They, they would not take me to the hospital. I begged for help. I laid in that cell in the fetal position, having seizures. Just having a bunch of things happen to me that I hadn't, I had no clue. I know now. I'm dying because of the excessive pepper spray. I have pulmonary arterial hypertension, which I will, it's a death sentence. I have brain injury. I have neurotoxicity. And I was recently falsely arrested again on January 12th. I was called to the Harnett County Sheriff's Office, and I drove there because they said I was stalking my ex-husband, which I don't stalk people. And I wanted to show Detective Weaver that they were actually stalking me. Well, I was arrested. While there, they told me I would have my oxygen. I ran out of oxygen. I was having seizures. I begged for help. They would not help me. In fact, Miller stated to me. I said, I'm, I'm here like this because of Dawson. And Miller stated to me, she says, maybe I'll get a promotion too. And they denied me oxygen. And this was just a month ago. Something needs to be done. I have contacted Sheriff Coates, and I have been completely ignored by DA Coates and Matthews.
Lisa, wrap your comments up, ma'am.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Kelly Waite. I am a resident of Western Harnett County in the area of Olivia. I'm a wife, mother of three, and a licensed mental health provider in the community. I'm here today to advocate for mental health rights, specifically within Harnett County, because I see a problem. In October of 2020, I was home personally recovering from COVID-19. I was treated by my hospital, Womack Army Medical Center, as a military beneficiary. When my symptoms worsened, my husband made a 911 call for help. When the ambulance arrived, they were accompanied by Harnett Sheriff detectives or deputies on a medical call, which I found to be very strange. For many, many minutes, I was provoked and agitated through an open bedroom window while I was sick in my bed, requesting for privacy, requesting to be left alone, requesting to heal at home, as I, as is my right. After letting them in the home to let EMS check me out, I was medically stable. They left. Should be the end of my story. Should be the end of my story. Unfortunately, two hours later, I was in my bathtub bathing when several male deputies stormed my house into my bathroom while I was vulnerable and bathing actively in my tub. I was forced out of the bathtub, I was handcuffed, I was put in an ambulance, and I was taken for a 45-minute ride across the other side of the county. The reason? Involuntary commitment. For the record, I have no history of mental health or substance abuse issues. North Carolina Chapter 122(c) in the updated 630 passed in 2018-19 timeframe make it very clear how involuntary commitments should be handled. When I arrived at that hospital, I was completely traumatized. I was very sick. My possessions were taken, and I was forcefully restrained and held down on an exam bed as medical professionals, so-called, proceeded to inject me with medications I did not want. I spent three days in isolation before the county recognized that this was a mistake and the order was canceled. So I have a lot of questions. I've searched for answers, and I'm hoping that you all will take a time, take some time to take a look at what is really happening with the mental health state in this county. Where's the community crisis plan as required by Senate Bill 630? I've spoke with Sandhills. I've spoke with them several times, and the answer is, guess what? You're not a Medicaid beneficiary, you're not eligible for our services. But when the county makes a decision to take somebody's rights and take them to the hospital, they are also in charge of transportation. I was transported 45 minutes to a hospital when my hospital, with 20 years of my medical records, was less than half the distance because of money. So I ask, when will this county invest in mental health? I hope that it's soon. Mental health issues are increasing, we see it everywhere. I'm seeing it in my practice, we see it with our children, we see it, you know, with our community members, we see it in our, you know, criminal justice system. The budget makes it clear that it is not supporting it. I've looked at the budget. You know, I don't know what fixed charges mean, but it does not illustrate what money is being appropriated for what response. So I realize I'm out of time, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is it possible for the mic to be turned up? It's hard to hear, it's hard to hear your back. Could it be turned up?
My name is Heather Byrd. I live at 6582 401 South. It's hard to follow the pain that I just heard from the first speakers, but I'm here for something different. As an educator, I often think about whose responsibility it is to teach empathy, to teach priorities, values, and morals. I love to dream that these things are taught in the home, but often they are not. If you want a healthy society and community, teach your children to value their surroundings. Let them observe adults trying to fix what's wrong in your community. I taught in this county 15 years ago, and then I moved back to my hometown. But then I recently came back as a permanent resident. When I began to look into how the shelter was doing again, the animal shelter of Harnett County, I looked to see if they had proper vet care coming in, are they being financially supported yet? I was surprised to see at the time an enthusiastic shelter manager named Eileen going above and beyond despite lack of funding, despite a crumbling shelter in need of rebuilding and repair. I was excited to see social media support from citizens, outreach support from North Carolina and South Carolina rescues, real volunteers even, pledges, donations, people cared. I was excited to meet people like Larry, Ronnie, Eileen, and Barry. I clicked "Join" for a volunteers page and felt some hope and pride for this area I moved back to. I expected to see that nothing good was happening for the spooky building, Dylan McKay Place, because that was what I was used to thinking and hearing. But it did, and it does, not because of overwhelming support from county funding, but because of people who work and volunteer there. Can you imagine what would happen with more of your support? You have had exceptional people tell you what is needed for years. But where is the answer? What are you saying to our society? It is so true, the words of Gandhi, which I know everyone's heard, the greatness of a nation and its moral progress can be judged by the way its animals are treated. We know we can't change the way every household responsibly cares for their animals, but education and assistance starts with your decisions going forward. What if we taught children ignore it and it will go away? Let there be abuse to living things, it doesn't matter. There is no one to help, so turn a blind eye. Money here can be spent on big, beautiful buildings, but not a crumbling, weakened animal shelter. Priorities, what are they? What do people want? I promise you that the majority of people want to properly run safe and humane animal shelter in this county that financially supports and values their staff. The crucial need of this community is showing empathy for the Harnett County Animal Shelter, and there are many more needs. And what has already been asked, begged, and proposed, if not for the animals and staff, then perhaps for repair of the overall reputation of this county. Thank you.
Richard Chapman, 5220 Christian Light Road. Good morning. I have a couple of suggestions. One is about the list of legislative priorities that you're going to hand over to Howard Penny and Jim Bergen. I believe now it's on March 7th. I think it would be a good idea if a year from now, when the county manager's office dusted off the this year's list and updated it for next year's, that you ask him to include a report on progress. What happened? Lots of times, goals aren't fully realized, but they actually do make progress, and I think the public would like to know what that progress was. It's hard for me to imagine, for example, that in the next 12 months, the entire county is going to have internet. But some areas will get it, and maybe the problem of underserved versus unserved will be solved. Who knows? It would be helpful to know, to find out, and I believe the county manager's office is well able to report to the community about that progress. My second suggestion pertains to items not on the list of legislative priorities. Commissioner McCoy said during discussion recently that there are a lot of needs in Harnett County, and she wondered aloud whether some of those needs ought to be included on the legislative priorities list. She has a good point. There are a lot of needs in this county, and they ought to be listed. Maybe somewhere there is a master list of the county's needs. I don't know. If there is, I'd like to see it. If there is not, maybe we should start one. A series of public hearings or public meetings might be a good way, or perhaps create a Citizens Advisory Committee of, say, five appointees from each commission district, who could meet and create a master list of county needs and what, if anything, might be done to address them. I think the public would appreciate having its views solicited, and I think the list would become, like the legislative priorities list, a kind of benchmark for progress. So to sum up, let's report next year on this year's legislative priorities, and let's compile a master list of needs, wants, desires, dreams, whatever's on people's minds. It would be a good reminder of the mission of government and a good way to involve the public. Just a few ideas to chew on, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman.
Hello, my name is Alan Longman. I'm at 234 Hamilton Road, Bar Level, North Carolina. Reason for my talking today is that I'm very disturbed about what's going on in the prison system in general, but in what's going on with Angela Scarborough. And the reason for my talk is that there's other things that need to be known. First of all, that her husband's running for congressional office, that Wayne Coats is a very strong friend and supporter of him in that, and that when the Trump-up charges were given, where she was kept in the detained center, that bred an opportunity to silence her because she was writing a book about how abusive her husband was and is running for office. I believe this is very serious. I believe that it is a scenario that needs to be investigated, and I believe that because it involves a congressional district, it should involve the Attorney General. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Longman.
Good morning. My name is James Cody. I live at 146 Cedar Lane out in the western part of the county. I moved here about two years ago, and kind of getting settled in, and I've been, as you know, on the news nowadays, all the time, I'm seeing where police officers are doing the wrong thing and even killing people, and they, of course, get away with it because they say, "My life was in danger." So you can blow somebody away. I think we should, most places in the United States now, and it's moving more and more, establish a citizens review board of the Harnett County Sheriff's Office Department. I don't know exactly how to set that up. I'd be happy to participate if you can, unless you all got somebody in mind, but I think the citizens ought to be able to have a lot of input on exactly how things are done. Also, as far, and as far as the training goes, because now you can hire a 21-year-old guy with a high school diploma and run him through some training and put him out on the street, and there are a lot of constitutional rights that I have that they don't even know about. A lot of, a lot of places are getting in trouble because of this. Now, you all already paid out a $6 million lawsuit, and so I'm getting to my next point. I want police cameras, body cams on all cops. I'm not going to go away. So, and there's a study out on the internet, of course, there's a lot of stuff on the internet, but 66% of the officers agree with body cams and 93% of the public. And I assure you, I can go around the county and get petitions to a lot of people on there who would support body cams. I think that body cams are good, it helps a police officer, and it's going to help me if I get stopped. If you go to YouTube, now, some of that's a bunch of trash, but if you go to YouTube and you look, there's a lot of people that's been captured, a lot of cops been captured on there, giving the wrong advice and saying the wrong thing. So I hope we can move toward that. If not, then I guess when the next election comes up, we can solve that problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Kent Jeffries. I live at 747 Perfoy Road, Fuqua Varina, District 4. Before I make my comments, I want to, well, make a comment that I've read in a recent article regarding educational funding. That comment is, budgets are moral documents. I would go one step further and say things like legislative priorities are moral documents. They are a window into the priorities of the members of our elected officials who set and create these documents. Budgets, legislative priorities, things of that nature, funding, they are moral documents. With that said, your top legislative priorities, your first one here is economic development. That's all well and good, pie in the sky, we're going to do these great things, we're going to attract businesses into Harnett County, create jobs, increase our tax base. What that does is increase the number of residents in our county demanding the services that would be required to have funding. Our legislature is on a path to go to a 0% corporate tax base rate. That's a moral statement right there. They don't intend to have businesses to pull their weight when it comes to contributing to the funding of our citizens and our taxpayers. In addition, if you'll note, and I think Harnett County is engaged in this, corporations are provided with tax incentives to locate in the county. You lose for any number of years that tax base, the tax revenue. If a municipality has something to offer to a business, a manufacturing business or whatever, if it's attractive enough, it's going to locate there regardless. The next thing, and the Harnett Regional Jet Port, that's a whole nother topic there. But then your third priority is education. And I see some vague comment about the burden that additional students are going to create and to try to identify a solution to help fund public education. We're going to talk about capital improvement projects later on in this meeting. School construction, land acquisition, building construction, or capital improvements. There already exists, and each of you saw my email prior to the work session on Senate Bill 437, that was introduced in April or March of last year, that would allow capital funding and charging fees, impact fees, to developers. And that is set, that went to the Senate Rules and Operations Committee the very next day, and there it has set. Commissioner Wetherspoon indicated he forwarded that to Senator Bergen and Representative Penny. Will you follow up on that and talk with them in your back rooms when you have your county party meetings and things like that, when you hobnob? Because that's where all this stuff takes place. It's not out here in this public forum, it's in these back rooms, you know, over a beer or Scotch or whatever. So I challenge you to get with our representatives and get this thing moving. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. We have about, this will be the last person.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Walter Waite Jr. I live at 2724 Olivia Road. I have a tremendous stutter, but when I announce, it's not there. So there's no sarcasm, it's just me announcing. So I would like to speak about two things this morning. The first would be duty, and the next would be training. My wife spoke earlier, after she was assaulted at the hospital in Dunn by a security officer, I took her to Womack Hospital for a sexual assault forensics exam. She was assaulted when she was naked. It took the forensic examiner 76 pictures to capture the lacerations and the bruising from her head to toe. Eventually, the detective that was assigned to me, the detective from Dunn, he called me on the eve of Thanksgiving at 9:00 PM to let me know that the DA, Ms. Matthews, would not press charges. After speaking with him, I found out that DA Matthews never seen the 76 forensic photos provided by Womack Army Medical Center, never even seen it. In my attempt, in my wife's attempt, to contact DA Matthews and have a sit-down to find out the why, the duty is to at least let us know the why. I'm talking to you also, ma'am. The duty is to understand the why. I'm not a legal expert, I am not, but at least let us know why. A crime was committed, evidence is there to show it, why not prosecute? Why not prosecute? The other thing is training. I called the non-emergency line for Harnett County for a request for information. The next thing I know, a squad car shows up at my house. I meet the individuals out on the porch, I respectfully talk to them. I was a veteran in the Army for 20 years, combat for 39 months, I understand how to speak to a person with respect, and I did so. What this police officer did at the conclusion of our conversation is he pulled the old foot-in-the-door trick, foot-in-the-door trick. Now, I shouldn't have done this, but I told him to follow the Constitution, and I shut the door on him. I'm I'm lucky I didn't get tased or shot, and I'm thankful that he didn't do that. But the training piece is you've got to follow the Constitution. I know this is little old Harnett County, and I'm proud to be a resident, and the Constitution is a big thing. But the training starts at the sheriff level, Mr. Wayne Coats. I believe in leadership, and I believe that he can do it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That will conclude the public forum, and we will move on to Item 6 on our agenda. Ms. McFadden, would you like to come forward and discuss the CIP?
Yes. Good morning. Last week, we presented the county's recommended capital improvements program for fiscal year 23 to 29. The CIP is the county's seven-year plan for identifying and funding capital projects. The recommended document and presentation have been online since last week, and at this time, we would like to ask for the public's input on the recommended plan.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. At this time, we will open a public hearing to talk about the items on the CIP. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Elizabeth Longman, 234 Hamilton Road. In your proposed plan, there is money to be allocated to help expand the sheriff's department's jail. Right now, the sheriff's department is an agent of terror in the United States of America. You have heard from various human beings, all of them unrelated, all of them having talked to each other, coming to recite to this commission board the terror they have faced as human beings at the hands of the sheriff's department. To actually have the gall to continue to allocate tax funds to fund terror is absolutely astonishing. It's absolutely astonishing that this commission would even consider being agents, or funders of agents of terror in this county. We all have our personal stories. You've had enough horrific stuff. Mine is extra horrific. We've all suffered at the hands of the sheriff. Remove anything concerning the sheriff. You ask that man, Wayne Coats, for no accountability. There are no, there's no data on the number of people in that jail, how long they've been there. I saw a man that served 665 days in jail, in jail without trial, without being presented to a court for a charge that was the maximum of 150 days. How many other people does he have captured in there? You ask him for nothing. There are no body cam requirements. Yet you throw money at him with no accountability. If any of us citizens asked you for, to fund anything, even the nonprofits, you ask them for everything, including their ancestral background. But that man gets to hand terror to the citizens of this county, and you all want to go and expand his terrorism acts, expand his terrorism program. It is beyond training. It has gone to the point of morality. We cannot continue to exist as the funders of agents of terror. If that department was called Al Qaeda, you'd want to vomit. If it was called Hamas, you'd have an opinion on it. But it is called the Harnett County Sheriff's Department, and it's just as terroristic as any of those organizations, just as terroristic as any of those organizations. I urge this commission to remove any funding for that county, for Sheriff's Department, any additional anything with no accountability requirement. Require them to tell you what they are doing with the public's money. What are they doing to it? Children are in that building. Those are people's sons and daughters. They are not trash. They deserve justice. They deserve equal protection. Protection under the Constitution doesn't just belong to a certain class of people. It belongs even to the lowliest person sitting in that jail. That Constitution still covers them. And for you guys to say, "We're going to ignore all of that. We're going to act like it is business as usual, and we're going to add additional funds to make sure that axis of terror upon our citizens is well-funded to go and buy more things to exert acts of terrorism on our citizens." How, how dare you? How dare you? How dare you all? And go home and sit with yourself as, "Oh, you did a good job," as pompous things. People are hurt. People are dead. People are dying because of the axis of terror of the sheriff's department in this county. Do not, do not even fathom a conversation about funding a new or extended building without having that measure of accountability on the human lives that they take possession of and squirrel away back there. Please require accountability before you go and reward acts of terror with brand-new buildings.
Thank you, Ms. Longman.
Good morning. My name is Ronnie Kemp. My address is 244 Chesley Lane in Lillington. As I read through the proposed CIP list of projects, there was one project noticeably absent, a new animal shelter. I eventually found it near the end of the report, labeled generically under future projects, the bottom of the list once again. It is my understanding that attempts have been made to have a needs assessment performed, and those requests have been cut from the budget, the same budget that has a running surplus. Like I've said before, our animal shelter is crumbling. It's dark, loud, and in a state of perpetual disrepair. It is located between the prison and the wastewater treatment plant. It smells bad and is the opposite of warm and welcoming. It's one of the few county buildings that hasn't been rebuilt or renovated. I also can't help but notice that Harnett County is willing to pour excessive amounts of money into the promise of a regional jet port that will, fingers crossed, represent a future stream of income. I'm here to tell you our animal shelter holds the very same promise. It may not generate income right now, but it doesn't have to be that way. If the county invested in the shelter with only a small fraction of the amounts being thrown at the jet port, you could turn animal services into a profitable operation, too. It takes a vision and leadership that cares about the success of animal programs in our community. You need all the same things that the jet port does, an adequate inviting facility and bright, friendly people to staff it. But for some reason, you don't seem the same value in funding a new shelter. If you read the CIP under animal services, the alternatives to building a new shelter simply state, "Do nothing." Sadly, that seems to be the county's approach year after year, as this project continues to be kicked down the road, left to languish and wither away with the hopes of the dogs and cats housed inside, waiting for the day that someone sees its worthiness. How we collectively value and treat animals in Harnett County is a direct reflection on our community standards and correlates to the livability of this area. If you ever watched the 80s movie with Kevin Costner, Field of Dreams, you'll remember this line, "If you build it, they will come." I think it's very fitting for the state of Harnett County today. We must build a community and services that reflect our values first. Schools should be on that list, along with an animal shelter, parks, and playgrounds. The people who appreciate those things, they will want to move here and spend their time and money investing in that dream, too. Especially as the county prepares to unveil some very substantial increases in property taxes, when people feel like they're paying top dollar, they're not only going to expect fully operational and reliable public services, but they're going to demand them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Margaret Morton and live at 86 Gwendolin Way. According to your CIP, your order of legislative priorities puts the jet port before education. Assuming your reasoning for this decision is to increase economic development in form of tax revenue from industry and jobs, this is, in fact, putting the shoe before the foot. Folks, that shoe is already bursting at the seams. Even if your assumptions of economic development growth become a reality and tax revenue trickles down to schools and infrastructure, that is going to, in fact, take years. And unfortunately, our overcrowded and underfunded schools don't have years to wait for a solution. The education crisis in our county has been festering for a very long time. We all understand that both Harnett and Hoke counties are somewhat in the same situation. As noted in the CIP, there are so many military families that get BAQ and VHA to buy homes in our county. However, they pay taxes to their home of record, not North Carolina. They buy homes that are in higher-density neighborhoods, small lots, homes, and the generated tax revenue is not nearly enough to pay for one child to go to our schools, let alone two or three. Then they PCS out of state and keep that home as an investment which causes the tax fleet to continue in a vicious cycle. The priority to go after full funding for the federal impact aid program needs to start now, not down the road. That needs to start now. In addition, the housing crisis in Wake County is forcing families to purchase homes in Harnett County and the surrounding ETJs. But yet, we continue to approve high-density residential zoning requests that are further adding to the strain on our schools and infrastructure. Harnett County has imposed limits on water allocation, and this has caused developers to petition annexation in Angier and Lillington ETJs. Lillington performs a high, a traffic impact study before annexation or zoning requests can move forward. There's no school impact analysis done. We all know developers will make their money and run, leaving us holding the bag and our children and families bearing the brunt. What are you going to do to fix the problem now? Will you commit to not approving high-density developments and work with Lillington and Angier to do the same until the education crisis is resolved or on the way to being resolved? Will you commit to influencing our senators to get North Carolina Senate Bill 437 that will allow the county to impose impact fees from developers to help fund schools and infrastructure? We need to influence them to pass this bill, as Kent very eloquently stated. Education must come before the jet port in the CIP. You can't continue to sweep education under the priority rug. The crisis is now. We cannot. We don't have the time to wait for the revenue to come in on something that we don't know is going to happen. The industries are preferring to go or are being wooed to the municipalities and Lee County. What are you going to do? Please move this priority of education to the top of the list. Our children can't wait. The crisis is now. With so many homes being built, that is going to add to it. We have a crisis. Let's fix it. Let's be part of the solution and not the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning. I'm Rebecca Brock, 5220 Christian Light Road. I'd like to thank the commission and Lisa for putting the opportunity to speak on the public ability on the capital improvement projects. I do, would, would ask that you allow for written comments up to a certain period of time from the public on these CIP forums, because we were only given a week, two weeks, a week, to look at these. But anyway, let me just start to say, I'm glad that broadband is on your CIP list. Definitely needs to be there. I know it's not totally funded, but your eyes are on the mark. I believe all five of you have your eyes on that mark, and it is slightly improving. The schools that Marge just mentioned is also a priority. As Chair of the Democratic Party here in Harnett County, I check new registration and the registered voters that are growing in Matt Nichols, Commission District, Johnson's Southwest District, and Wetherspoons District. Those are the five biggest voting precincts that are seeing growth, and I didn't see schools really targeted to some of those areas that are growing. And you're kind of in reactionary mode instead of visionary mode to put the schools up on the, in the forefront of what the CIP plan is. And last week, we were told that 80% of the population in Harnett County resides in the ETJ of Harnett County. Only 20% reside in the townships of Harnett County. So that means the bulk of people here are under the jurisdiction of this county commission. So just would like to make a point about that. Secondly, I'd like to make a point about our voting, our Board of Elections. Having a new office for them is really, really key. Also, I think they're understaffed with the effort they need to make to put voter information out there in the public. Our current public does not know when the primary is, and there's not a real big advertising budget. It's $3,000 in the Board of Elections' budget to advertise for the primary election. The dates have moved. They may move again. How does the public know that? So please know that they need additional funds for staff and advertising, quite frankly. Another point I'd like to bring up is the 50 car cams that you are authorizing and paying for, for the police department. Fifty. That's 10 per your districts. How many police cars are there in the sheriff's department? I know you can't respond. I'm just asking a rhetorical question. Out of those 10, some of them go home with the officer at night, so they're no longer available. So 10 cars, is that really enough? And secondly, I didn't know, I'm not informed on this, do those car cams have audio, or does the officer have a mic on his uniform? I don't know. So is it just a picture with no words? Maybe you all could consider that audio is needed. But really, when most of the townships here in Harnett County have authorized body cams and we don't, that's a real shame. We should have body cams on every officer. On a personal note, on the jet port, as a private pilot, I think it's great that you're putting some money into the jet port, and I do believe that it will render some economic development for Harnett County. I would like to put in an effort, or I should note that I've spoken to Mr. Coley Price about is a restaurant for that $100 hamburger there at the jet port. You may be able, to be able to fund some of the school projects from that $100 hamburger restaurant. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brock.
Hello again. My name is Alan Longman. I'm at 234 Hamilton Road in Barn Level, North Carolina. The reason I'm talking about is it's a great idea that you're finally getting camera systems updated, that you have these systems placed in cars, and the possibility of bringing camera, body cams back into the picture. But there's a problem we have is that the IT department controls the information that are on these cameras. In 2019, there was, there was an investigation done here about the integrity of evidence and found that there was tampering. We ordered a videotape on an incident, instance, and the six, major six minutes of that instance was gone when it was given to us. The point is tampering is still there. If you do have the body cams, if you do have all this, and they could be tampered, doctored, or made to not function properly, then you have a problem with the system. We believe because you have prior problems with the system being doctored or interfered with, that we could do better as far as leadership inside the IT department. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, Sarah.
Jerry Rivas, 364 Twin Ponds Road. You know, these capital improvement programs, it's all well and good when you write this stuff down on paper, but once again, we're putting the cart before the horse. You know, the last time a school was built in my area was Highland Elementary School, which was about 14 years ago now. Every year since that school's been open, they have put two temporary huts out there. There's no bathroom facilities, there's no drinking fountains in these huts, but yet we keep just approving more and more building, more and more subdivisions. All these people coming in from Research Triangle Park. Oh, somebody pass a law, make fireworks illegal. Call the police department. My redneck neighbor's shooting at a raccoon that's killing his chickens. You know, a bunch of crybaby namby-pamby little... Well, I promised my wife I wouldn't cuss up here anymore. My late wife, God bless her. But, you know, you promise this economic development, you promise these businesses, "We'll give you tax breaks. We'll give you this break. We'll give you that break." But my property taxes are going to go up. That's how it gets paid for. Your taxes are going to go up. Your taxes are going to go up. Because somebody has to pay for these tax breaks. It's you. Dash cams in the cars. Let me tell you something. If I get stopped for speeding and the officer says, "Oh, step out here and stand in front of my bumper," go to hell. I don't have to get out of my car. There's no law that says I have to get out of my car and stand behind some abusive jerks in front of some abusive jerk's camera. You know, this goes to integrity. Four years ago, when I ran for sheriff, my main platform was body cameras. Body cameras, body cameras, body cameras. It adds an extra level of accountability for everybody. My esteemed opponent, he took a $250 campaign contribution from Johnny Sanders, who was one of the most abusive jerks that ever wore a badge. Even Larry Rollins fired the guy, but Wayne took money from him. But, you know, you guys are supposed to be representatives of the people, and you afford the people the opportunity twice a month to come up here and speak for three minutes. There's 135,000 residents in Harnett County. If you take those residents, divide that by the time you allow that, that's like having 6,750 people and you let one of them speak for three minutes. And you limit it to 30 minutes because, well, that's state law. You can go beyond state law. State law doesn't say you have to limit it to 30.
Mr. Rivas, excuse me.
On a final note, the body camera and the dash cam footage, it won't get released to you because the North Carolina Sheriff's Association has...
Mr. Rivas, this hearing is about the CIP. Please stick to that point.
Or you shut up. I'm not done talking. You shut up.
Mr. Rivas, please have a seat.
County is run by a bunch of damn crooks.
Kent Jeffries again, 747 Purfoy Road. Just to elaborate on what some previous speakers said and what I said, I noticed in your capital improvement program, there was a section called Board of Education that says that the Board of Ed has requested approximately $200 million in today's dollars, and we know inflation is going on, so that's only going to increase, in new facility requests. Now, there's no detail here, and it's probably available, but is that just to address current needs, to get all of the kids out of the huts, the temporary structures, and into a permanent building with enough teacher funding for adequate classroom sizes? Or is that just a stopgap method? Or does that include future needs? Now, you have a planning department down there that has resources available to them. There are tools, just like your property tax assessor's office, has tools available to establish the market value of, I think the figure was over 60,000 properties, maybe 68,000 properties in this county. So there should be tools available to, based on projected rates of growth, for the future needs of capital projects, new schools, land acquisition. So I noticed in here, it says that the county manager, our new manager, recommends that the joint work session between the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners be scheduled to discuss a future bond referendum. Okay? So that bond, if it's approved, we go before the citizens and assume that it gets approved, that ultimately has to be paid for. That comes from tax revenues. Okay? And it further states that the county's financial advisor is to estimate the impact of a bond referendum on the county's property tax rate and the debt burden to determine the final list of projects for consideration. Now, I've seen the information provided by the assessor's office, and just a wild guess, it looked to me like the average home price in this county with this latest reassessment has increased around 60% since the last revaluation was done in 2017. You guys are going to have to establish a new property tax rate in the coming months. Now, common sense, and I've been following the political scenes for a long time, says that nobody likes to have to pay taxes. Property taxes are probably one of the, short of income taxes, are the most visible thing that a homeowner has to pay. So there's going to be a challenge. You guys are going to be challenged to try to come up with a revenue-neutral tax rate based on the revaluation, because it's not going to be politically expedient to vote to increase the property taxes, to adequately fund everything that needs to be done in this county, not just a list of wants, but what needs to be. So I refer back to my previous statement about moral documents. So one of the earlier speakers stated about, he would like to have, on a yearly basis, when there's a follow-up with the previous year's legislative priorities, what was the status? What happened? What transpired? Right? I mean, that's always, when I was in project management, when the project was complete, you always looked back to see what went right, what went wrong, what can we do better in the future? So a year from now, when we stand here and we look back and say, what did our commissioners do with their legislative priorities and with their capital improvement project funding to address those urgent needs that stand before them right now? What will you be able to say? One very easy thing, and I go back to this Senate Bill 437, to allow system development fees, because the legislature has changed the terminology and they're no longer called impact fees. The current system development fees that the county is allowed to impose on development only covers water and sewer projects. It doesn't cover any other infrastructure needs such as school buildings, land, libraries, animal shelters, all of the other needs that residents, current residents and future residents coming to our county expect and deserve. 437 allows the imposition of those impact fees, system development fees, to cover other capital improvement projects. So a year from now, if each of you were to be asked, what did you do to speak with Senator Bergen? Because that's where the bill sits, in the Senate Rules and Operations Committee. Senator Bergen, as we know, he's moving on up the food chain. He started out right here with the commissioners, and that typically is the stepping stone into state politics. Howard Penny started out Board of Equalization and Review, county commissioner. Now, he's a representative. Okay? So it doesn't take a rocket surgeon to see what takes place here. It also doesn't take a rocket surgeon to look at who funds the campaigns of even this Board of Commissioners. When you go back and look at the list of donors, the individual donors, it's amazing how many of them list their occupation as developer, builder, contractor. Plus, you have probably arguably the most powerful lobbying organization in this state, the North Carolina Home Builders Association PAC, and the North Carolina Realtors PAC, two of the most aggressive and well-funded political PACs in this state. So it don't take a genius to follow the money. So you follow the money behind where that Senate Bill 437 sits, and look at who chairs that committee, and the predominance of the members on that committee. And then you talk with those folks that are supposed to represent the people of this county, and by extension, the people of this state, we're getting the shaft. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Hey, Angela Scarborough. I have to wonder if any of y'all stepped outside of Harnett County lately, because when I left Harnett County to live for a little bit, it was a different world. It was a totally different world. You had a wake and more. So different. You want to fund Sheriff Department, jet port, and all that. I don't know if you all have not, you know, I've had the opportunity to actually be in the jail, and I ask that you don't judge people that's in jail, because I was a counselor, I was a teacher, I was a coach. I didn't belong there, and I'm sure a lot of other people didn't belong there. But that, if you're going to fund anything, you know, there's a lot of mental health in that jail that I've noticed, a lot of mental health. People in there, when I was in there, people sleeping on the floor, and having to get out on a $65 bond, and you're there for three days, it's not, no. You guys need to do better. When it comes to the jet port and all that, who are you guys really funding? I mean, it's not the citizens of Harnett County. It's not the residents. You know, as a teacher, I've been in the schools. I've been in one of the nicer schools, Highland Middle, but these children are really lacking in education and resources. And with the Sheriff's Department, it's like it's gone rogue. It's a totally different environment in the Sheriff. It's all in who you know, and anybody, you have sons, daughters, sisters, could be arrested at any given point for anything. And would you want to send somebody to that correctional facility, knowing there's so much abuse? I mean, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out where the funds need to go and what's going to benefit who. You know, you need to do what's right for the citizens, not just your, I don't know, your people. But anyway, you guys just really need to do better, because this county is really lacking, and it's so far behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scarborough.
Good morning. Anna Bryant, 109 Woodwater Circle. I just wanted to make a quick recommendation to the board. We've heard a lot of the citizens come up and speak about the various needs and thoughts and opinions. This represents a small percentage of the population. I would like to encourage each Board of Commissioner to go out to the neighborhoods in their respective areas and solicit more feedback from them, because there's so many more thoughts, feelings, and opinions that aren't able to be here at 9:00 AM on a Monday morning. The same level of effort that we've seen with the property tax reappraisal going to each section of the district, would be greatly appreciated to see that here for this effort as well. It's going to affect what happens for the county for the next three to seven years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant. Seeing no one else come forward, I'm going to close the public input session concerning the CIP. Ms. McFadden, I believe we have a schedule published as to what the next step will be in approving the CIP and when that will take place.
If the board would like, we will schedule another work session, but right now, it's on the schedule to be approved on February 21st.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. All right. Moving to the, moving to the next item on the agenda. Mr. Hall?
Today, I'm here to recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve the agreement between the county and Cloudwise to allow access to the conduit that goes underneath the railroad crossing on East McNeil Street here in Lillington. This will eliminate the potentially extended permitting process with the railroad company and allow Cloudwise to move forward with a running fiber into the conduit to complete the project they need, keeps it in a timely manner. The fiber build and access to the county conduit is the core reason for the amendment, the statement of work that we approved back on November 15th meeting last year. Just a couple of key points in the agreement. It's initially a 60-month agreement with an option to extend another 60 months. There is a $1,200 fee annually. The agreement's set up to allow the county to keep things uniform if another entity decides that they would like to participate in one of our conduits that we have throughout the Lillington area and the county area. And that's pretty much it. Is there any questions or thoughts that I could help answer?
Anyone have questions for Mr. Hall concerning this matter? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve this agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve this with Cloudwise.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Hall. All right. Ms. Jackson, would you like to come forward and talk about the strategic plan?
Hello, and good morning, everyone. It is really great to see everybody today. Thank you so much for allowing me the honor of presenting your strategic planning item this morning. My name is Rebecca Jackson. Thank you. Is that better, everybody? Sorry about that. I'm vertically challenged. My name is Rebecca Jackson, and I am Harnett County Strategic Consultant, working under the umbrella of the University of North Carolina School of Government. It's my pleasure to be back with you today as we continue your journey to develop Harnett County's first-ever strategic plan. This plan establishes the county priorities and serves as a roadmap for the Harnett County Board of Commission, not only the Board of Commission, but the county management and the county departments for years to come. The strategic plan is rooted in a mission to serve the community, and it aligns your vision for the future of Harnett County with actionable strategic items and goals. Over the last few months, Harnett County government leaders, employees, the community stakeholders have participated in this strategic planning process that included multiple engagement opportunities, which sought input into the development of this comprehensive plan. Here we go. So during our time today, we will review the strategic planning process briefly, tells us how we got here. We'll look at the highlights from the citizen and employee engagement efforts, and we'll review the draft Harnett County strategic plan, which kind of pulls all those pieces together for us. Today, we're going to be looking for the board feedback and consensus. We're prepared to make any adjustments necessary to the plan, and the board, certainly that the board feels is necessary, and to bring the final plan back if need be for adoption at an upcoming board session. Harnett County Board of Commissioners championed this effort to lead the community forward with a strategic plan aimed at creating a positive impact for the community. This slide shows a graphic with several lines of effort. You'll see all different colors, varying shades, advancing from different angles, to converge into one straight line on a path to hit the target. We can use this graphic to illustrate what a strategic plan can do for a local government, with many different processes, priorities, and services that we've heard this morning that combine together into a single focus for your community. The strategic plan allows the opportunity... The strategic plan allows the opportunity to hear from our employees and citizens and to prioritize those needs. So it sets a clear path for results and communicates the path forward. Understanding the results we want to achieve and having a clear focus is foundational for building a culture of high performance and essential for a community impact. When we use the term strategic planning, we're referring to a plan that has a long-term strategy, one that's going to provide some direction, identifies some outcomes and is the basis for performance results. The elements of the strategic plan include a vision statement that tells us what we want for our community and what we want our community to look like for generations to come. The mission statement that will tell us and the organization, its role in fulfilling that vision. It defines our purpose as an organization and it really brings together employees and connects them to their purpose. Core values. So this is a statement that communicates the organization's beliefs and attitudes and it guides employee behavior and how they would relate to each other and the community. The plan outlines the strategy. It defines goals and objectives and priorities and these can be seen in your key strategic actions and your key performance indicators. And the plan identifies performance targets and helps us track our progress. So this graphic is an example of a strategic plan in action. It's a strategic plan working for you and aligning your organization for success. The plan is developed and adopted by the elected officials. The plan should then be used to inform the annual budget development and the capital and technology plans in the future. Once resources are allocated to the prioritized programs, the plan is executed by the staff and performance results are managed and reported. There's also a focus on performance improvement and the feedback is provided from the workforce and the citizens on a regular basis and you'll see that coming forward annually to adjust the plan. We started out this journey, we said that this plan is not a static document. It's a living, breathing document. It's not a one-and-done effort. In order to use the plan, you need to adjust it over time with your changing environment. So let's talk about the process for developing this plan for Harnett County. In June, the county managers and department heads held a retreat. As a team, they collaborated on the county's successes, opportunities for improvement, and together they developed an environmental scan for strategic planning context. They discussed things like the employee survey, internal culture, economic development, service needs, the changing environment with the county growth, the impact of the pandemic that's having on the community and your staff, how the county works with stakeholders, partners and collaborators. The input that they provided was essential and that moved forward to the Board of Commissioners' retreat, the strategic planning work session that was held in August. And as a team, the Board of Commissioners added input into that environmental scan, also discussing the internal and external trends and the changing county needs. The board collaborated on a Harnett County timeline exercise and discussed important short and long-term key issues. And for most of the retreat, though, the board focused on developing those strategic planning themes for each of the elements of the strategic plan. So if you remember, we worked together through the themes of the vision, the mission, the core values and the goal areas. The process then is provided for citizen and employee engagement into the strategic plan. That was done in October. We then drafted the plan in presentation for board adoption consideration. I'd like to take a few minutes to share some highlights from the engagement process with you. As we move forward, we're going to be looking at the elements of the plan as well. Again, following the strategic planning workshops that were held in, with the county department heads and with the Board of Commissioners, the county sought input from the public as well as county employees. And this input was used to refine the strategic planning framework and draft the formal plan for board consideration today. Harnett County invited residents to participate in one of three community workshops in October to learn more about the strategic planning process and provide feedback. We held two virtual workshops and one in-person workshop in this building. The county employees were also invited to attend one of two employee engagement workshops to share the priorities and to learn more about the process. In addition to the workshop, citizen and employees were asked to complete a short survey to provide input into that strategic plan, which is incorporated into your draft report today. The county received 776 survey responses, that's quite a lot, from citizens and 263 survey responses from employees. About 22 citizens attended the in-person workshop here in this building. And capturing the voice in employees and the community within the strategic plan helps us to ensure that there is alignment with organizational priorities and community expectation. This is a little bit hard to see, but I know you have your report. I understand that the board did receive the engagement report with the strategic plan and I'm prepared just to share a few highlights and how that folded into your strategic plan today. The survey asked to rate, for instance, Harnett County vision themes on a scale of one to five, okay, right? So one being strongly disagree and five being strongly agree. So both for the employees and the citizens, all 16 vision themes that came from your board retreat, they were rated above three and many above four. So what that says is a lot of good consistency in the community and with the themes that came forward. Another feedback that we received, just some words that came through and some of the comments, were things like a thriving county, unified county, eliminate the divisions, equitable services, smart growth with better job opportunities, broadband for all, eliminate poverty, safe and healthy, clean and sustainable environment, properly funded schools, enjoying our beautiful natural resources and recreation opportunities, communication and engagement for citizens and employees. And so this is our shared vision statement, which tells us where we're going and it describes the ideal state of Harnett County in 10 years and it's focused on the community's future. So it's outwardly focused. Harnett County is a unified, safe, healthy and engaged community that is culturally vibrant, well-planned, with a thriving economy and high-quality education system in harmony with its environment and beautiful natural resources, with strong leadership ensuring equitable services so that all citizens will prosper. So that is your draft vision statement. Moving on to the mission. A mission statement describes why an organization exists and defines an organizational role in pursuing the community's vision. We asked employees for feedback on the mission themes and received, again, a strong rating of above three for all of them and four for many. So this again shows that strong consistency with your mission themes. The draft mission statement took feedback, all that feedback into consideration and so it is, "Harnett County will effectively and efficiently deliver high-quality county services and public infrastructure with smart growth strategies and through a responsive board and workforce who are committed to excellence, ensuring the public trust with dedication, leadership and governance." Moving on to core values. Our core values inform how we make decisions in fulfilling that mission statement to serve the public. They define our standards of behavior for everyone, the board, the county employees, the commissions. The new core value statement begins with this, "Harnett County employees are public servants whose purpose is to create a better Harnett County. We use the feedback we received and some creativity of staff to develop an acronym that can be remembered," and I just love this though, actually, "because it has a sense of innovation and ownership for it. And the word is create. So you go back to, you know, the beginning that says to create a better Harnett County and the word create stands for customer service, respect, ethical and fair treatment, accountability, teamwork and excellence to create a better Harnett County." So this is kind of the meat of the plan. Our goal statements define what the organization intends to achieve and lays out a path the organization must follow to reach the vision. The survey asked to rate goal themes on a scale, again, of one to five with one being strongly disagree and five being strongly agree. All eight goal themes received a rating above a three with many above a four, again, strong results. The top goal statement themes were focused on providing excellent education system, providing consistent and excellent customer service, high-quality services to citizens and also to have a dedicated and engaged staff. For goals, we received feedback such as the following, safe and healthy Harnett County, strong economy and thriving businesses, high-quality services, excellent customer service, dedicated and engaged and empowered staff, addressing pay and organizational development and training, effective infrastructure with smart growth strategies, excellent education for all Harnett County students, effective communication and community engagement that empower citizens and consistent and clear leadership direction. So this slide lays out your five goal statements. The plan combines the feedback again and then it reflects the county's priorities over the next three years. So your goal statement should look out three years. The goal statements define what the organization intends to accomplish and lays out that path in order to reach the vision. Each goal includes a set of objectives that further define the goal along with key strategic actions that should be undertaken in the coming year to make progress toward those county objectives. Key performance indicators will also be developed after the adoption of this plan that will assist the county in tracking progress toward accomplishing each goal area. The five draft strategic goals are superior education, healthy and safe community, organizational excellence, economic strength, informed and informed and engaged citizens. Now, at this point, I'd like you to turn to the goal section in your strategic plan and just make sure that we're reviewing all of the objectives and the key strategic action items. And that is, the goal sections actually begin on page, sorry, hold on just a second, 12. Superior education, you'll see that that particular goal looks at a strong public school system, is essential for the development of children to, into productive adults who contribute to the overall success of Harnett County. And it goes through, one, two, four different objectives and then it has five different key strategic actions. At this point, would you like me to list some of them so that we can have them on record? Okay. Just wanted to make sure. So the goal objectives, we have, again, we have four of them. The first one is to maintain effective collaboration with Harnett County schools to coordinate the budget process, capital projects and other initiatives. Objective two is to maintain a long-term funding plan for capital needs. Objective three, attract, support and retain high-qualified and experienced public school teachers and staff. And objective 1.4, to advocate for appropriate allocation of school funding from federal and state sources. So again, those goal objectives sort of explain really what you're meaning by superior education and gives us a path moving forward for three years. So looking out just for the next fiscal year and things that may guide your, again, your budget and your action plans, these are called key strategic actions, things that we discussed during our retreat. Engage school administration proactively to discuss and coordinate the budget priorities and funding for fiscal year '23. Action two, restore the county involvement in capital planning and architecture committee for ongoing upcoming projects. Three, create and adopt a long-term plan for funding new schools based on the Board of Education priorities. Four, address teacher supplements to increase competitiveness in the region. And five, adopt legislative priorities for fiscal year 2022 that includes advocacy for increased funding for schools. So that is a superior education goal. The next goal that we'll review is organizational excellence. Harnett County's greatest asset is its employees. The county desires to become an employer of choice, growing a culture that values high performance and embraces diversity. So I'm going to read the goal objectives that again, kind of expand on the, on the goal purpose and some of the targets for that goal. Objective 2.1, so the first objective, is to attract, retain and grow high-performing employees. Objective 2.2 is to lead the organization with best finance and budget practices. Objective 2.3, to foster culture of accountability through performance management and adherence to internal processes. Objective 2.4, seek new and best-practice technology to improve processes in all operational areas. Objective 2.5, improve resident and customer experiences through efficient, high-quality service delivery and continuous improvement. Some of your key strategic actions moving forward over the next fiscal year are going to include, 2.1, complete a, sorry, compensation study to assess competitiveness of employee pay and salary compression for existing county employees. Action 2.2, review and revise employee performance evaluation process to encourage culture of accountability. 2.3, engage county employees in improving internal processes and provide regular education on adherence. 2.4, develop and implement an organizational training and development program. 2.5, research, develop and implement a holistic performance management program. 2.6, implement a process for obtaining citizen feedback on county service provision. 2.7, provide county employees with enrichment opportunities. All right, that completes our organizational excellence goal. Our next goal is safe and healthy community. And the, what you'll see underneath of that, it says, "Harnett County is committed to ensuring that all residents have opportunities to live healthy and productive lives and that they feel safe. This commitment is shown through the provision of services and programs that enhance residents' lives and promote healthy behaviors and lifestyles." So we have six goal objectives and I'll read them for you. The preserve, objective 3.1, preservation and enhance, oh, I'm sorry, pardon me. Preserve and enhance county residents' quality of life through open space, parks, recreation resources and greenways. 3.2, protect open space and natural resources. 3.3, improve access to healthy food. 3.4, decrease alcohol and drug abuse. 3.5, provide high-quality emergency response and public safety. And 3.6, support, promote and celebrate arts and culture. You have five key strategic actions in that goal area and they are as follows. Prioritize parks and greenway projects for the development through the capital improvements program. Provide support for local farmers' markets and community gardens at the county locations to support healthy food options. 3.3, assess most pressing issues surrounding substance abuse and engage stakeholders to develop, engage stakeholders to develop a plan to curb problems. 3.4, increase provision of county programs and initiatives aimed at encouraging healthy lifestyles and outdoor activity. 3.5, meet regularly with local art organizations to generate and implement ideas for celebrating art and culture. Okay? That is safe and healthy community. Economic strength. Harnett County is committed to creating economic opportunity for our residents. The county is working, working to strengthen its economic development program to position the county for success. This includes providing well-planned infrastructure to recruit business and industry, working with our educational partners to ensure highly skilled workforce and leveraging our resources to ensure residents share in the prosperity generated through these efforts. So we have seven goal objectives, quite a few in this one. Objective one, provide an effective economic development program. Objective two, provide well-planned communities with smart and sustainable growth strategies. Objective 4.3, attract and retain a diverse and viable tax base with increased commercial and retail. Objective 4.4, provide strategically placed Objective 4.4, provide strategically placed infrastructure for business and industry growth and attraction. Objective 4.5, enhance Harnett regional jet ports function as an economic engine for the county. Objective 4.6, foster upward mobility and reduce poverty. Objective 4.7, leverage partners and stakeholders to enhance economic development capacity. So you have six key strategic actions under the school area. So I'll list them now. Revised development and incentive policies to support thriving business and job creation. Increase availability of high-speed broadband throughout the county. Seek to extend natural gas availability along strategic corridors identified for commercial growth. Action four, pursue enhanced transportation infrastructure to reduce congestion and increase access throughout the county. 4.5, plan water and wastewater infrastructure to direct and attract residential commercial and industrial growth toward the target areas. 4.6, educate county departments about economic development priorities and their role in advancing those priorities. So that's your economic development goal. And your last but certainly not least at all is inform and engage citizens. This is your goal five. This goal has four objectives, so I'll list them now. Provide effective communication to citizens and businesses. Objective 5.2, provide opportunities for citizens to engage meaningfully with county government. 5.3, provide effective internal communication and engagement with employees. 5.4, strengthen citizen advisory boards and committees program. And under this goal, there are five actions, key strategic actions, and I'll read them off now. 5.1, launch program to provide presentations to the community groups and organizations from county staff on the requested topics. 5.2, create and distribute bimonthly county newsletter in Harnett Regional Water Bills. 5.3, implement use of video and storyboards to promote county events and educate citizens on county services and initiatives. 5.4, launch new engagement initiative to inform citizens and county employees through quarterly update meetings. 5.5, redesign the county website with citizen dashboard to create a more user-friendly experience. That was a lot. Okay. All right. So again, with respect, we're asking for board feedback on the draft plan with consensus on any of the revisions. If there are changes or revisions, we would like to, of course, take that back, do some changes, and then we're looking to bring the plan back for adoption, if that's the case, to a very, to an upcoming board meeting. And I think that certainly if you were to entertain adoption today, we would certainly, certainly could do that as well. But following adoption, we'll use, we are going to need to use that plan to begin the budget development for the county departments. So the staff is going to really want to hop on that. I know that you all have a meeting coming up, certainly in the next few weeks, I believe. And then, of course, after adoption, we're going to look for implementation, right? Again, we talked a lot about this during the board retreat. It's not a plan that sits on the shelf. It's something that will be developed over time. It is something that I think that you can use and utilize that plan to move forward with things like linking up the budget process, linking up the agenda items perhaps that come to the board, linking up your communication plans and those kinds of things. So implementation of this strategic plan, I think, needs to begin with conducting some outreach for the community, so that's, that's super exciting, you get to brand it. And then you also want to reach out to your organization as well, so your employees will want to see themselves in this plan. And then additionally, you're going to want to develop a performance management program, really, like, you know, what are the tools you're going to use to monitor the plan, make sure that we're creating impact for the community and that we're, we're actually implementing the plan the way the board would like to see that implemented and that we're accountable and transparent for you and for the citizens. So we'll, you know, we'd like to be able to work with your staff to bring that forward for your consideration, looking at what kind of tools do you use, what kind of frequency you would want that report coming back to you on a regular basis. And finally, I know you all probably have some questions, but I really would like to thank you for the opportunity that you provided to us to work with Harnett County. It was a lot of fun, and it was also very rewarding to see Harnett County move forward together. And that was, that was really very rewarding personally and professionally. And I'd also like to thank your staff, your county staff. They were so excellent with this process, especially Mr. Haney and Ms. Ashley Bauer for their support and their dedication through this process. They worked a lot of extra hours to see that the citizen and employee engagement pieces were prepared and that you have a really nice document. So I do want to thank them for their support in that as well. And with that, I stand ready for any questions that you have.
Does anyone have, yes ma'am?
I don't have any questions. I have good comments.
Oh.
Long overdue. This is long overdue. And I am very, very particular, proud of what you've done with the core values of Harnett County. Something that you and I, as well as other commissioners, I've been preaching for a long time. So I want to say thank you.
You're welcome. Thank, your staff came up with create.
Thank you for the whole staff.
I mean, I'm not even going to, I'm not even going to take credit for that. I, you know, I provided all the information back, and they, they, they took an extra day and, and worked create.
That is so true, but I want to say this too. I think it, the staff, the commissioners and I took the time to sit back and reflect on what needs, what we really need here to move Harnett County forward. So I think this is great.
Thank you, ma'am.
I agree with Commissioner McCoy. I think, I think you, you and your staff have done an excellent job.
Thank you.
I appreciate what you've done. I also want to thank our staff, our employees, the citizens that participated. We always welcome your input. And my fellow commissioners, I thank you for what, for your input and the thought that you put into this process. I will ask, what's the desire of the board? Do we want to, put approval, do we want to schedule approval for the 21st? Are there further questions for Ms. Jackson today?
Chairman Wetherspoon, I'd like to also make a comment. I don't really have a question either, but I would also like to thank you for your leadership through this process. However, I, I want to revisit a statement that I made when we were talking about initiating this process, and that is, this plan, as Ms. Jackson mentioned, is only as good as what we do with it as we go forward. And, and you probably remember that I said, if we're going to just do something to check a box and put it on the shelf, I'm not interested. So I appreciate you saying this needs to be a living document, plan, that we rely on to guide us going forward, that we revisit, that we tweak as needed, improve as needed, if you will. But at any rate, I'll get off my sub bus, I just want to say thank you. I was very impressed with your leadership. The sessions I attended were very well done.
Thank you.
A lot of feedback from stakeholders, and I appreciate that leadership. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I have something to add also to go along with the same sentiments there. I kind of just want to point out, because we've got a lot of eyes and ears in the room right now, that this strategic plan that we have finally come up with, that we have not had before. And all the comments that get presented up here at the podium, and all the concerns that get mentioned, even this morning and today, this addresses a good amount of it. You know, we never really had a set of goals, and I mean, about a year ago, this whole board sat together and we were like, you know what, like, we need goals, and we need to find legs in order to get there and accomplish those goals. This right here is a way that we can actually have something on paper and work towards them, actually see results. It's a good way to measure, you know, the goals that we do have and what we're accomplishing. So I kind of thought it baffled me, and that's kind of probably why we're in the predicament that we are now with a lot of things going on in the county. We never had that where the whole county was working as an organization, as an engine together. I really think this is a good, good little platform that we have implemented. This is something that each day we're going to be focusing on, getting to that end goal. So I thank you a lot, staff. I'm really excited that this is finally coming to fruition, so thank you very much.
I'd like to say, it's about time we had this. Over the years, we haven't had this to look forward to, and now that we see it on paper, got goals to look forward to. The strategic goals that we've got in this paperwork right here will take us forward. You've done a lot of work. We've done a lot of work, and just, I agree with everything it said here, and just thank you. We're looking forward to this.
Thank you so much. I appreciate, I appreciate that, and it was, it was a pleasure working with you all, and I hope to see you again.
And if, and if I can speak on behalf of our county manager and staff, he and I have had a discussion about, about the strategic plan, and I know that he's committed to carrying this strategic plan forward. And if the county manager's committed, that sort of tells me the rest of the county employees are committed. And so we look forward to working with our managers and staff moving forward to implement the plans that are laid out in this document. And as Commissioner Matthews said, I don't want it sitting on the shelf and be dusted off in five years and say, well, let's redo this. I think in five years or less, we can update it and say, well, we've done this and this and this and this, now what's the next step in these areas? Yes, sir?
Well, I'll say as county manager that there's nothing better than clear guidance from the commissioners as to where you want to move this county. And this plan clearly defines that, and I think it will provide us the, the guideposts that we need for our future and our growth. And I think, obviously, the timing is perfect with regards to getting this approved. We have a planning retreat scheduled for the 24th. Now we'll have these, and we'll look at what kind of particular action steps we're going to perform over the next year to three years to accomplish these goals. And I know as I look at them, there are many of them that are currently already being considered and items that are already being worked on. So we've already leaned forward and started on some of these items. Obviously, some of them have long lead times, and that's why it's so important that we begin the processes to move them forward.
Thanks, sir. Do I hear, do I hear the board agreement to put this off until the, our meeting on the 24, 21st for approval, or would you prefer to approve it today?
I'm about not kicking the can down the road, so I'd be fine with today.
Want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this strategic plan.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Motion carried unanimously, Madam Clerk. Thank you again, Ms. Jackson. We appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. At this time, we will move on to the county manager's report.
You see the reports that have been included relating to the finances and the budget amendments. I guess the only other comment I'll make is it's fitting that you approve the first strategic plan. I notice as I sit here and I look at the seal directly ahead of me, Harnett County was formed February 7th, 1855, so we celebrate our 167th anniversary today, approving our first strategic plan.
Amen. All right. Thanks, sir. Any new business to come before the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do. I would like the board to consider possibly like an answer period in the agenda, post, post-public comment, just as a chance for us to maybe address some of the questions that we do get here from the audience. It was two years ago that I was out there at that podium, addressing the board of commissioners, and I honestly thought that a lot of things that I had to say were falling on deaf ears. Let me be the first one to go ahead and say, what you say is not falling on deaf ears, okay? I'm not, I'm going to go ahead and speak for the rest of the board on that also. I mean, we're up here, we're passionate. It's something that, I mean, you can see with the strategic plan that we're trying to launch this county into the future, trying to make up for a lot of years past where we have been stagnant, and that's why we're at now. I think an answer period would be beneficial, just so we can, you know, aid in transparency with y'all, because a lot of these things are discussed, you know, kind of like Mr. Chapman brought up. You know, we need a time to answer the why that you guys have, okay? I know I've gotten probably, you know, one-on-one with most of y'all in here and discussed different things, but collectively, I think everybody needs to hear it. I mean, there's many reasons like why the airport's getting put in front of, you know, education. Well, obviously, you know, nobody wants to raise taxes or pay taxes, and right now we are burdened as taxpayers right now. It's solely on us as the tax base for the county. Trying to generate more funding is going to help us pay for those things. It's something that hasn't been done, okay? And that's the reason why we're trying to focus on that and trying to bring in more residual income to the county to provide for these services that we desperately need, okay? There's a lot of other factors that go on also with that nine-digit zip code. I don't know how many times we got to beat that into people or what we really can do, but the county's being hemorrhaged right now just by a nine-digit zip code. Down on the western side, where I'm at, you've got Cameron, you have Sanford, you have Spring Lake. Addresses, Anderson Creek to Spring Lake, Carolina Lakes is Sanford. Everything else on the other side of 87 in Harnett County is Cameron, okay? New Walmart down there is in Cameron. People ordering on Amazon online in all these communities, if you don't put in that nine-digit zip code, we are losing that to our neighboring counties that we are trying to fight against in order to keep some of the stuff here being bled dry. There's a lot of other factors going on right now, and we are aware of it, and we're trying to take every single thing into consideration and implement it to get things done as fast and efficiently as possible, okay? Good Lord, body cameras. I think everybody on this board already agrees that body cameras are a necessity, okay? It's, y'all are sitting here addressing the sheriff and sheriff issues. Don't want to delve too much into it, but that, that'll be up to y'all to handle come voting season, okay? If you don't like what's going on, then go ahead and make that change. I've, we've all addressed it with the sheriff before, body cameras. Besides cutting funding to the sheriff department, which actually hurts the department, you know, and that's not something that we want to do, there's really not much we can do. He's an elected official, okay? Do we want certain changes? Yes, but we are not the sheriff to make those decisions. But I also think, like I said, I think there should be an answer period in order to speak to the individuals and constituents, just so we can actually get some of this off the slate once it's brought up. Keep doing what y'all are doing, because it matters up there at that podium, it really does. So thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Appreciate that. All right. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to say something. First of all, I want to say that I appreciate the comments from the citizens. Without you all making comments and telling us things that are going wrong in your community as well in this county, we, a lot of times, we have no way of knowing. But I want to address one more thing, too. The young lady said that we each and every one of us should be in our communities. I'm in my community. I know what's going on in my community, as well as my district. I don't cover the whole district because I'm only one person, and it's a long, long district. But I feel free that my constituents in But I feel free that my constituents in my district know me enough and know that I have a listening ear, and if there's anything I can do to assist them, I'm going to do it. I just want to say thank you. Some of the comments that you made are valuable comments, and I think that that comment period, that time, is a time for you to talk to us and let us know what's on your mind. So thank you very much.
I'd like to say one thing in coordination with what Mr. Nichols said. We do pay attention up here on your comment. Here's two pages of notes that I made on everything you said, so we're not asleep up
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Chairman Wetherspoon?
Yes, ma'am. Could I ask a question regarding Commissioner Nichols' thoughts? I believe it's difficult, as the young lady in the back says, it's difficult for me here down here, so, but did you say an answer period?
Correct.
Okay, would that be formal or informal?
Well, first off, I'm an informal person, so I'm totally fine with it being informal. I think if someone's up here asking a question, and I mean, I've seen people just get stumped when they're like, hey, are you going to respond back to me? And they may not know the protocols or even the rules and stuff that we have, but I mean, there's got to be a period in time where we can sit here and actually have a discussion once something is brought up to the attention, you know? If there's something that can be asked by, or answered by staff when they're right here, let's go ahead and knock that out instead of kicking that can down the road and kicking their issue down the road, because I don't want them to feel like they're being blown off.
Well, I'll go on record and say that I would be in favor of an informal time like that. I think that would be valuable, for these folks have taken the time to come. Me personally, I'd much rather talk one-on-one than up here to down there, whatever it may be, so, because that's just how I am. But I'll just throw that out for my two cents.
Is this something that we need to put on the work session agenda for next Tuesday?
Yeah.
Madam Clerk, would you add that to our work session agenda?
Absolutely.
Okay, anything further? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.